This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the town in Kanan for Tuesday, May second, two thousand twenty-three. At eight thirty-one AM. We have a couple items to add to the agendas this morning. We have a sheet of the three here. One is a sweeper parts. For the highway department. One is a project management service for the playoff theater. And there's an executive session with the town attorney. Regarding a legal claim. You have memos on each of those and I move we add these three items to the agenda. The what the third one will be executive session.
Second year.
All favor. So we'll have two executive sessions. We're probably last more than a half an hour. So a large part of this meeting will be an executive session at the end. I don't think we have vote vote coming out of the executive session, do we?
Kevin, I just would like to add or modify one agenda item and add another. The first is on item eighteen and that's just it's listed as a discussion of this should be the seasonal employee hiring and I just that's going to be actually an approval before the board of selectmen. So I just would like to make that modification. And the second thing is I'd like to add a discussion of the utilities commission.
I second both motions.
Well, actually, I mean, the reason this is a discussion is because I don't think we should act on an approval. And we don't, we don't need to act today.
For the seasonal place?
Yes.
It's May.
It's May.
Yeah, this we have to. We have another two weeks before.
So I'd like to bring it.
I'm seconding her motion.
That's fine.
We'll discuss those in favor.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Let's see. This is a hybrid meeting. Well, okay, so the minutes for the last meeting on April eighteenth. I move your approved minutes. Any comments, agreements?
None.
I move your approved minutes as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. This is a hybrid meeting. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics, schedule for review and or vote comments may be submitted electronically to the OS distribution at new can CT.gov and we'll read them. Alan, are you going to comment? Okay, good. We have a member of the public in person.
Right there.
Right there. It's fine.
Thank you for this opportunity to greet you and and welcome us back from the out of our caves and our isolation caused by the pandemic. We can, as we emerge from our isolation, I hope that we'll all work together in the spirit of trust and respect, an atmosphere of comity and commitment to one another to consult and to be verbal and to be honest and to be open and to fear no judgment, but you see the appreciation, endorsement of our community for your good work. P.S. I don't know much about this, but it seems to me that the commit they select persons, all of them should be properly compensated. Maybe I'm speaking out of turn, but it seems to me it's time for that because we ask a lot of you all. So thank you, especially the rest of the equipment who works so hard for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All good to see you. Anyone else from the public? Anyone online? Okay. First item, I gather that's why Andrew's here. Police vehicles, equipment.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for having us today.
Introduced.
Just introduce. This is the new captain, Joseph Ferengas, the captain of staff services.
Congratulations, Joe.
A lot of him kind of taking over this role.
Okay. So this is something Joe will be doing in the future.
Yes, yep.
Okay, good. Good to know.
So we're here today requesting permission to enter into an agreement with specialty warning systems to outfit two of our marked police vehicles with our standard police package. The total cost per vehicle is nineteen thousand, thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents, and the funds will be from approved capital accounts.
Any questions?
Have we used this particular group before for the other?
For years and years and years.
Okay, yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
This is in the budget, right?
Sorry?
In the budget.
Yes, yep, all improved accounts. Yep, from last year.
When will they be ready? Fully outfitted?
On the vehicles to be delivered. So we're we're we just have to order it ahead of time to make sure it's here. You know, there's a lot of lag time on parts getting here. So we have it ordered and it takes a few months to get here and then it sits in the garage at specialty warnings for probably another couple of months.
Okay.
Vehicles already.
Thank you.
So the vehicles are tomorrow.
There you go. We were getting two Mark patrol vehicles.
Unmarked.
Oh, marked, yeah.
Oh, marked.
Yeah. For the main.
Okay, now for the questions, I move your approved this request from the Canadian Police Department to enter to a contract. Two contracts with specially warning systems in the amount of nineteen thousand, oh, thirty-three eighty-one each to equip two new police vehicles with audible and visual warning systems.
Second year.
Through the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thanks, Joe. Mr. Kimes.
Good morning. On a very rainy gray day. So I brought forth a request for a resolution. This is actually from the state of Connecticut. Department of Emergency Management Homeland Security has requested that each municipality sign a resolution authorizing their CEO and our the ability to sign documents on authorized by Demus in particular. The one that is on our desk right now is a more memorandum of agreement regarding the use of federal fiscal year two thousand twenty-two Homeland Security grant funding and custodial ownership of regional assets. So the resolution you're authorizing today would authorize Kevin to be able to sign the document, which basically says that Stanford acts as our fiduciary for the regional emergency planning team. Federal dollars come down to the state, the state allocate some of it to the regional emergency planning teams, which are made comprised of all of the emergency management directors for our region. And with those funds that Stanford acts basically as a fiduciary for the R E P T, some regional assets are purchased. And so the this resolution would authorize Kevin to sign the agreements that basically enable Stanford to do that activity, enable the region to allocate these homeland security funds and also this agreement, which Kevin would sign post this resolution would continue our accountability for the fact that we have in our possession a few regional assets. So we own, we don't own, sorry, we are the custodians for two variable message board signs. We have a shelter trailer which contains in it cots and things for shelters. We have an animal shelter trailer that are all owned by the state, but we are the custodians responsible for the maintenance of. So basically this agreement states that we agree to continue to keep them in good shape and functional and deploy them as needed in the region.
Which makes sense, but one question, Russ. Stanford's are fiduciary. Are they in charge of determining allocation amounts?
They're not. So Stanford merely acts because the regional emergency planning team is an entity is regional in nature and someone has to act as in essence that the bank, the checkbook for it. So that's all they do. The actual plan, the team itself has a charter and organization. It's been in existence for years. And they have, you know, elected members making their comprising of their own chairs. We have monthly meetings with minutes and everything else. So they allocate those funds to support things such as the regional bomb squad, the regional hazmat team, those sorts of things.
Good.
So this is an existing agreement and it's just this is an annual renewal, is that it or?
My understanding, I haven't seen one of these in my guess, two and a half years doing this, but I think this is something that maybe they're catching up on.
Yeah, because I've never seen this. This is the first time I've seen this.
Yeah, and and the
twelve years.
The memorandum of agreement which they sent us, which is quite extensive, is something I think they're they're catching up on, to be honest with you. And and we've always known we've had these assets and we were responsible for maintaining them and deploying them if called upon. But I think this is formalizing as well as the Stanford's role just for managing the purse.
Okay, there's so. Has this been reviewed by our own town council, small town attorney?
It has. Our attorney, no, I don't believe so.
Okay, there's a provision in here with respect to audits. And it references that the contractor will provide for an annual financial audit acceptable to the department. And then it there's also a reference and I'm trying to find it here, but in terms of the this resolution allowing information, any information that they request to go up to the Department of Emergency Services. And I was just wondering whether that should be more specified. I would think that not ever all information is available to them, but I just it'd be helpful if you could have just an attorney review of it.
I I'd say this, you know, we're awarded the state. Percent division of state, and this is standard. The state always gets whatever they want. So that's what I sign these all the time.
Unfortunately, that is the case. They put rather the state does put some bold language in there and we're not the only one signing this.
Yeah, it just seems very broad to me. That's all.
Welcome to government.
Well, is it being that this is the first time we saw it, it just would be, I think, helpful just to have a quick legal run through review.
Okay, we'll prove the subject legal review.
Thank you.
Any further questions? I move re approve this request from the emergency management director to authorize the following resolutions and they're set forth in our agenda. I won't read them. I have a second.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Russ. Mr. Riley.
Good day.
Good morning.
So we are applying for a grant to the State Department of Economic and Community Development for two million dollars to support the Playhouse Project. It is well aligned with the grants priorities of improving vibrancy and economic vitality downtown near transit hubs, restoring historic properties, funding projects that have public-private partnerships and that are shovel ready. So we're, this is one of the grant programs that requires a resolution or requests a resolution, certified resolution from the town clerk that the Board of Selectmen has authorized this application. So that's what I'm here for today to ask for the go ahead from you to apply.
Are we too late to the game? Are we too late to the game?
Uh, yeah. I don't know. No, I mean, I
but I hope not.
I just said, I don't know. And that's not what I meant to say.
Right.
The answer is no.
Good.
We're not too late to the game.
Good.
The deadline is tomorrow, however. I'm glad I asked and you know.
Need help?
I'm getting a lot of help. There are hundreds of pieces pulling to pull together for this. And but we're no, we're going to be in the game. It's going to be, you know, it's competitive. For sure. And we're asking for two million out of a pot of ten million.
Would this go to reduce just the town's side of the public private partnership or would it in order to the benefit of both parties to the country?
I would. It's not a public private partnership. We're landlord of a building and the board of finance emphasized that our relationship is a landlord.
I'm not gonna, you know, get into an argument, whether it's a public private partnership or not. I think it is, but whatever.
Yeah, at least in the I think the way the state would look at it.
Yeah, they're a commercial enterprise, not a nonprofit, so.
I see. But it's a private company. It's it's not a public entity.
Lot of investors in New Canaan.
We're partnering with a public private partnership, whatever.
This is this is the piece, the four million, and we're asking the state to support fifty percent of that.
Of the unexpected.
The other two million presumably would be the town. They're not going to give a grant to a private enterprise.
Correct, right. We are the applicant. That's the right answer, I think.
Well, no, actually, the the total project is eight million. So, you know.
It was four, now it's eight.
Right.
Yeah.
And so the point is, it's made out of eight million and.
Right. So I mean, we're we're showing that their share would be twenty-five percent, two of the eight.
That's right.
Would be the state's share.
Right.
And I think they'll see that as appealing. You know, they 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 like it when the applicant has a big, big stake in the game.
So it's the the deadline is tomorrow. What's the timing after that in terms of determination by the governing body?
June, June announcements of awards. Possibly July, but no, they so that's that's it. They take a couple of months usually, so probably be the end of June.
How did this come to your attention, Greg?
I've known about this. I've applied to it in the past for for another municipality. And I think it's the third year of this. It's called the D E C D Community Challenge Grant. This is round three. This is the last round of this appropriation of the state. And so they want to, you know, they they also want to, well, anyway, I told you that we I see us as well aligned and I've just been aware of it. And the good news is also, Nick, that, you know, one of the first things I did when I got here was I asked all the department heads to please inform me of grant opportunities that come along because the grant writer often is not on the distribution list. So I got notified of this.
That's great. This is
With the help of others as well.
One, is it all or nothing? In other words, can they give you less?
They can give you less.
They can?
Yes.
But we want the whole thing, but. Okay, thank you. This is great.
Just just a couple other questions. So what do you think our likelihood is that we'll actually get this?
Knock on wood. I I
You're not a betting man.
You can't know. I I you know, I know that the the grant program person said that they expect about forty applications. Ten million dollars is not a lot of money.
No.
To divvy up, so.
With twenty percent going to one town, would that be a lot, large amount compared to the two previous?
They allow up to ten million in an application.
Okay.
So I think the minimum they want you to ask for is five hundred thousand and the max is is ten million. So I think we're, you know, I think we're making a reasonable request.
Yeah. One last question is probably not for you, but what do we do if we don't get it?
We've already blinded the project. It's already paid for.
For the full amount.
Yeah.
So if we've
I'm sorry, we have authorization to bond, I shouldn't say.
You have authorized, the town has authorized the funds needed for the full project. And so I'm being transparent with the state about that. And I'm saying the bonds will not have been issued when they make their decision.
Okay, so that's my question. So we'll know in June or July whether or not it's partially or in full or nothing.
How much we'll have to issue?
Okay, and then that will come up. Okay. Understand. Thank you. Welcome.
No further questions. I move your approved the request from from Greg Riley. To authorize the following resolution questioning regarding a grant application to Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, and I won't read it, but it's set forth in our agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I did have one comment. So Greg, you've been with us now for nearly a year.
Six months, Kathleen.
Have it later in the agenda.
Later in the agenda to talk about Greg. So my question is just.
You can vote me out or not.
I beg your pardon?
No, the probation period is ended last.
That I know. The probation, I'm looking forward to that. No, I'm just saying maybe at a future selectmen's meeting, if you'd be kind enough to just share with us, what are the the grants that we've applied to? What's outstanding? What have we actually won? Just to get a kind of a perspective.
I have that report. I've submitted that report to to Ian.
Okay. And we'd love to see it. Thank you for sharing it with us. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Good morning, John.
Do you want to read it or?
No, well, this is the this is the Future Stars Basketball Academy. It's on our agenda as thirteen thousand, one twenty-five for a basketball program at three elementary schools.
Yes, this is that one of the after school programs and it happens at all three elementary schools. So that's why the the amount of thirteen thousand, one twenty-five. It's it's a new vendor that Zach has brought in to help with our after school programs.
Questions?
Didn't I thought the name was familiar to me. Did we? Had we not used them before? I guess not.
I do not believe so.
Okay.
You know, because it wasn't in our our big list of
Okay.
requisitions.
And where are they based out of?
I think I'm not sure.
Okay.
Yeah, in in Connecticut. They're a Connecticut company, but I'm not sure what town. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Questions.
I move your approved this request from Parks and Recreation to enter into a contract with Future Stars Basketball Academy in the amount of thirteen thousand, one twenty-five for a basketball program at three elementary schools for the before and after school programs as described by John. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Joe. I've got three items.
Morning.
Morning, Joe.
So the first item we have is the construction and inspection contracts for the Ponus Ridge Bridge Project. We started the design process in early two thousand twenty under the state administered design program where a hundred percent of the design costs were covered under that program. The town was very involved in the design process. We made sure it met the town in New Canaan standards. We upgraded the stone cladding as well as upgraded the bridge rail system. The project was put out to bid in January. We received five bids. The low bidder was reviewed by the town and received DOT authorization to award to N J R Construction. N J R has successfully completed our Mariomi Bridge about eight, ten years ago, maybe. The project is scheduled for the summer, wrapping up before Thanksgiving. Permitting is complete, including wetlands. Tree work and utility relocations will start in the next, over the next few weeks. The bridge will be closed and the detour will be in place approximately July to November of twenty-three. The detour official route will be Greenlee to Dan's Highway to West Road, Greenlee or Dan's Highway. And once the date is nailed down, I'll I'll send out a notification to to everyone with the actual date to make them aware of the detour because people do not like.
Greenly and not Wackamie? Greenly and not Wackamie?
Yep, Greenly. It's it's rated. It's that's the official route. So people are going to find other routes. But that's
That's Wackamie straighter and why Greenly is a terrible road.
Yeah.
Who decides that?
Uh, the state. State of Connecticut.
Oh, really?
We we can look at it in more detail, but it's it's more about the truck, truck traffic.
What's the timing of the construction?
So the overall construction will will start in, you know, June. We'll make sure that we have everything procured so that we don't, you know, obviously, we don't want to shut down the bridge and then wait for materials. So they'll do all the 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 pre-ordering that they can do. And then once we know that we have all the materials secured, we'll we'll take, we'll demolish the old bridge.
And how long is it going to take?
So it's from July. We expect the demolition portion, the the bridge, the detour to be in place from July to November.
And what's the what's the local share on this?
That's eighty percent.
Federal?
It's eighty percent federal and and it's up up to twenty percent of state funding as well. So it's it's more than eighty percent. With the exception of a couple non
More than eighty percent of the total project
is funded.
Cost as as set forth on our agenda, correct? Or no?
Is is going to be reimbursed.
Okay.
From the from the federal bridge program.
If it goes over budget, who's it on?
They they account for ten percent. And then we have a conversation after ten percent.
Conversation with the federal government?
So Joe, if you'd be so kind, so traffic going up Ponus Ridge, the the first stop that it would suggest for detour would be at Greenlee? Is that what you're saying? Oh, you've got a map there.
Yeah, so there's a there's an official detour, a detour route. So if yes, so it would be, it would be greedily.
If you're traveling north, right? And so to the first like man's point, you might want to go off earlier on Wackamie if you wanted to go.
Yeah, I thought what happened comes after Greenlee.
No. Right. Not when you're really north.
Yeah, my point was coming Greenlee is a windy road for trucks. Doesn't make sense to me, so.
That's what the state, that's what the state determined. I think everyone always always discovers their shortcuts, you know, and I don't think there's a lot of truck traffic that that will be diverted there. It's already kind of a back road.
Okay. Say further questions? I move your approved this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with M N J R Construction for an estimated total of a million twenty-three, five thirty-five, four, five thirty-seven. Plus a contingency of one hundred, two thousand, four hundred.
So the second, there was a second.
Second request is the engineering firm of M J Engineering for estimated total of two hundred forty-eight thousand, one thirty. Project entails the construction and the inspection of the bonus rid bridge over Collins Pond as described by Joe. Second?
Second.
Further questions? Or I'm sorry, just discussion?
Just a question. When we see for not to exceed a contract of X, why do we add a contingency on that? If it's if the contract is not to exceed a certain amount, why do we put a contingency on that?
Well, just cut it to the point of if it goes over the the ten percent contingency that's 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 there within the
I'm just saying, I've never seen the language to say that the contracted amount is the is X and it's not to exceed that, but then we added contingency on it, so.
So the way that the contract works with for the inspection services, I'm sorry, I didn't go through that. So we went out, we received qualifications from three different firms. We sent that to the, we decided on a firm and then the state of Connecticut negotiates the dollar amount
Yeah.
And up to a certain amount of hours.
Right.
So there's a certain amount of hours and I wrote in the not the not to exceed because that's the way the 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 contract's written. But if they perform more work that's not covered under that contract, there could be, in fact, a additional cost incurred.
So it's all open. It's really it's really sort of the extension of the contract.
It would be an extended contract.
Rather than the original scope. So the MJ Engineering is sort of like an owner's rep. They're overseeing the entire project to make sure that.
Their inspection services. So they inspect.
That's a lot of money to inspect.
Every component.
They're 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 every day there? Okay.
They're there every day. They're there every day. And they're it's all based on the state state requirements.
Right.
I I I just think the wording, if it's ours, I don't know that to enter into a contract not to exceed. Maybe that should just be
We should just eliminate it. Maybe we should just take out the not to exceed.
When you have a contingency, it's going to exceed it presumably, but.
Yeah, but whatever.
Good point.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
I subject to that obligation.
Okay, temporary police department fire optic.
So the next item is thirty-nine locusts. We're going to make thirty-nine locusts. This is the temporary PD. One of the first things that we need to do for for that is to move over all the services that
We have the Andrew, could you join us up here?
So Crown Castle is the certified vendor for the Connecticut Department of Public Safety. That quote that we received actually goes to them, but we're responsible to to pay for it. So they've already negotiated this this process. And this is for six services, the CAD, the CCTV, the intercom, the phone, the NG nine one one and the PSDN. So there's there's a bunch of services that are related to the next item, which is moving the console over so the PD can function out of thirty-nine locusts. So there will also be, just to heads up, there will be a similar cost to move back when we move back in a couple of years. So I'm not bringing that forward now.
So Andrew's been working with Brian Yums on the planning for both the two twenty, I'm sorry, the South Avenue renovation as well as the thirty-nine locust Greek. So this is an opportunity to get updated on that. I think the the plan is to get this work done immediately after the board of Ed hearts in hopefully by end of August.
And so August twenty-fourth is the date that they they plan on moving. That's the date that we have in our schedule. We have about twelve weeks to fit out the space to make it ready for the PD to move in. So we plan on moving in there around Thanksgiving time.
So you mentioned that milestone, which is helpful. Can you give us a sense of the other milestone dates that you're targeting in terms of starting construction, finishing construction, blah, blah, blah.
Right, so that so the way the schedule schedule works, we the police are able to vacate in November from the the main police building. We will start with the demolition and abatement over in that location. So we have basically twenty-four months, two years from when we move. They actually Turner thinks they can do it faster and we're working on accelerating that schedule, but it's basically a a two-year, eighteen months to two-year project. So we move them back.
And in in terms of oversight of the entire project, to what extent is the police building committee actively engaged in?
Oh, they're very
like, just just for example, today's agenda items.
Well, today's agenda items are really for thirty-nine locust. Well, today's agenda items are really for thirty-nine Locusts, the temporary PD location. So they're not as involved in the, in the.
But it's part of the project.
Yeah, a staff, but, um, Bill Warburton is, I, I brought these items, um, to the last committee meeting. And they're aware of them. Um, and they actually, um, they didn't necessarily vote on the items, but they, they know they were going for.
But this is, how is this being paid for? I mean, this is, is this on the books is part of the project or not part of the project?
Part of the project.
It is. Okay.
Yeah.
Should we talk about the next item as, as well?
Sure. So, so the, this is also a related item. I mean, there's, there's really, um, so Norcom CT is the police department service provider. Though they're going to perform all the work under state contract pricing. They are the ones that are familiar with the console. They installed the console. They, they have the service contracts with the, with the town. There's really too many parts and pieces to, to list. So I gave you the whole quote, um, on there. But basically they, they move the, they move the console and the equipment to thirty-nine Locusts. All the equipment racks that are kind of the behind the scenes stuff that makes it work. The interface with the radio equipment, the access control. They relocate all the uninterrupted power sources. They make sure everything functions properly. And then the, um, the pieces from the components, the services that were just mentioned, the, the CAD, the CCTV, the intercom, the phone, the dine one-one, the PSDN. And all the, all the equipment that actually interfaces with that to make it work. That connect to that fiber are included in this quote.
So the same thing is to be a similar cost when they move back?
It's, it's a, it's a similar, but it, but it's a, it's, it's lesser. But yes.
So the current fiber that the Board of Ed has.
It's a dark fiber. This is a, a dark fiber.
This is a dedicated fiber under the state so that it's more secure or something.
It is. It's very, it's the most secure.
Does it remove after you move back to the?
Yes.
Renovate this. So the dark fiber is removed. Okay.
That's a good word, dark fiber. Any further question? So I move both of these items, uh, the, uh, Crown Castle Fiber Contract. For eighteen thousand nine hundred plus a contingency in the, uh, Norcom CT contract for the, for the, uh, relocation of the dispatched function of for forty-four thousand three eighty-two plus contingency. Second?
Second?
Further discussion? All in favor? I?
I.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Hey Tiger? Mike, you want to come up as well?
Uh, well, ambulances first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, quickly, we have a.
So, uh, we have a, um, in conjunction with the, uh, New Canaan EMS, they went out for, um, design and purchase of their new Trauma Hawk, uh, ambulance in twenty twenty-four AAV type three. They went to Eastford Fire and Rescue. They've been, we've been purchasing from Eastford Fire and Rescue in the past. We've gone and given it solicited to separate bids to, to certain companies. Eastford's won every single time and has been very, very responsive in their, in their, um, in the manufacture of their ambulance. So we, uh, EMS went directly to Eastford Fire and Rescue. They came back with a price of two hundred and seventy-nine, three forty-nine. There's a Ford guarantee that comes in later or a reduction, but they'll determine that at the time of the build. So we'd like to go forward with the purchase of two seventy-nine, three forty-nine. It should be noted that they'll be building this and there might be some, some costs as they go forward based upon we have to get in the queue. They start to build it and then there might be a, a tweak here and there. We have funds currently available for the, uh, for the purchase, but if we don't sign the contract now, we can't get in the queue, can't get the things start to be built to find out, um, the overall final cost, but the, um, the, uh, they're building it to the spec that we want, the spec that we want is, is quite lengthy. That's same build that we've had in the previous ambulances. They've done a very nice job for us and we'd like to go forward with, uh, with a contract with Eastford Fire and Rescue.
Is this a state contract?
It's not a state contract per se. No, the, um, there are certain aspects, but the majority of it is, is a, it's a custom build for, um, for the New Canaan EMS.
What's the expected life of this?
These are, I think that they'll last nine years, nine to 10 years. There are, they have three ambulances and we trade in one every three years. So.
So is that, uh, this, this wouldn't be bonded then because it's short?
It is.
It is bonded.
Yeah, but we, but it's bonded at a shorter rate at a, at a, at a lesser return. Yeah. Not on a twenty-year lifecycle. It's on a five or seven.
Okay.
I believe.
Tiger, when you say custom, that's our EMS saying, I want this here, that.
Yeah, it's the exact same way. They build a fire truck. Yeah. Yeah. So there, you know, they want certain things. So in an emergency, when you turn to the cabinet, you turn to the cabinet, right? And you know exactly what's in that cabinet without having to guess. Right? So.
Now for the questions, I move, we approve this request from Public Works to enter into a contract with Eastford Fire and Rescue Sales in the amount of two seventy-nine, three forty-nine. For a purchase of a Tama, Trauma, Trauma Hawk ambulance as described by Tiger. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I. Thank you. Uh, this next is, uh, is a purchase of a loader from CN Wood for a hundred and ninety-one thousand nine seventy-three. This is on a Sourcewell contract. So it's a nationwide consortium that we work through. They're giving us a trade-in of forty-eight thousand dollars for our loader for a total of one forty-three, nine seventy-three. What we are doing as well is we're testing the market and we're putting our loader out on gov deals to see if we get a better deal. If we don't get a better deal, we'll sell it to, uh, CN Wood for the forty-eight thousand. If we get a better deal, we'll take that money and then just, um, pay CN Wood the one ninety-one and then offset the cost with the trade-in. But this is a replacement for a twenty twenty-three Komatsu WA two seventy slash eight wheeled loader.
Questions? Questions?
Expected life cycle.
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yeah.
No further questions? I move, we approve the request from Public Works to enter into a contract with CN Wood in the amount of one ninety-one, nine seventy-three. Less a trade-in value of forty-eight thousand for a purchase of a two thousand twenty, the Komatsu wheel front, wheel, wheel loader. Second?
Second?
All in favor? I, I.
Thank you. This next item is for the Dunning Stadium Enterprise Zone. This is for, uh, contracts with our landscape architect, our architect. And our engineer for the preparation of construction documents. They brought us through the preliminary design and this will bring us to, uh, construction and bidding documents that we can go forward with the project. Richter and Seegan's proposal is sixty-two thousand nine hundred. TLB architecture is a hundred and four thousand. McCord Engineering is twenty-two thousand four hundred. For a total of a hundred and eighty-nine thousand three hundred dollars added a overall contingency of fifteen percent uh, of twenty-eight, three fifty for a total of two seventeen, six fifty. The contingency is most, mostly generated around meetings, time for meetings and things of that nature. Last night, uh, Richter and Seegan and, and TLB were with me, um, for our ZBA approval. We, we received, uh, approval of, uh, variances for the setbacks for the buildings and for building coverage. Interestingly enough, the, the, the site that it sits on, high school sits on it was never, it never, the high school never received the variance for the being over coverage. So when we came forward with, uh, this, uh, small expansion of seven thousand square feet out of the two hundred and one thousand square feet of coverage that we already have on the, on the, on the parcel, our attorney asked us to, um, go forward and make it all legal. So we went forward and got retroactive approval for the prior coverage plus the, the small amount of coverage.
Retro to the bill, the rebuild?
Built, yeah. So it would be two hundred and eight thousand and change total coverage for the stadium and the high school on that parcel. So, but that was, so those meetings, it's very similar. It's very difficult to determine how long you'll be there, how, how many opportunities you have to be there. The preparation thereof. So that is usually covered underneath the contingency.
Can I just ask on, on these? So these are all the professional services as a design of the total project. Will there be any other professional services added to this project?
We have, uh, in the previous, uh, for the previous portion, we had SLR, which was the traffic engineer.
Yeah.
Uh, there might be some, but we've already done borings. We've already done other analyses. Don't necessarily see that we might need anyone else.
Okay.
Hired.
So for professional services, we don't bid those out normally that each one of these service providers are very specific for the project, right? So Richter and Seegan, they're going to do.
They're the landscape, they're the lead, they're the lead on it. They're the landscape architect. They did water tower turf one. They did the preliminary designs on turf two and three. They did the master plan for Waveney itself or for all the athletic fields. So they're intimately knowledgeable of it. So.
So they're the lead on the entire project as, as the, as one of the architects.
Right. And then they brought it, then they, we brought in TLB for the building specific nature of the work and McCord is doing the site specific work specifically for site utilities and drainage.
Okay.
Things of that nature.
Okay.
So you, you mentioned that this is a partnership with NCAF. Thank you, Michael. And New Canaan High School Athletics. How are the costs going to be allocated in terms of?
The, uh, the overall construction costs are of, of four million dollars are split, be two million dollars for, from the town and two million dollars from, from the NCAF. These funds are coming out of the monies that were previously allocated in a previous budget towards this project or towards the Athletic Foundation.
So New Canaan High School Athletics, that's, that's just a euphemism for the town, right?
Well, yeah, it's working with Jay Egan as far as in, in John and, uh, John's staff.
From a cost standpoint, it's just, yeah, okay.
No, it's more on the design aspect and looking at what was necessary and needed at the stadium itself and the surrounding areas throughout the stadium to try to create this, this, um, nice enterprise.
So who's the project manager in this particular project?
That's me.
Okay.
And so for the two hundred and seventeen thousand, is that all going to be paid by the town or is that also split?
That's coming out of the funds that were in essence allocated to the NCAF in a previous budget year when we had that three hundred thousand dollar allocation. That's coming out of those funds.
So hundred percent of the two seventeen is coming out, what has already been allocated to the athletic fund. Okay.
Correct.
So technically that's a hundred percent of that cost.
Correct.
I'm, I'm, I'm not understanding this. We had three hundred thousand dollars a year allocated for NCA, NCF projects. Is that where this money is coming?
Where that's money's coming from. That's correct.
And, but on the other hand, the Athletic Foundation has been paying for all of the Ritter and Seaton design work up till now?
Yeah, paid for portions of the Richter and Seaton design work.
Right.
And things that were included in this project, like the stadium lights. That also that was paid for partially by the town and partially out of the Athletic Foundation contribution.
Yeah. I guess my question is, the Richter and Seaton work wasn't a town contract. You've been doing that directly with.
No, the master plan was, uh, was on, was on the Athletic Foundation, right?
That's the master plan going back two years, three years.
Right. The preliminary design was a town contract from June of last year.
Oh, okay. So, all right. So that preliminary work, okay.
Right.
We, we've both made contributions over the last three or four years as we ramped up to this, basically since we established the master plan.
Right.
Can I ask a question on the revenue side? So once this is up and running and, and hopefully we're getting more revenues in terms of concessions and tickets, et cetera. How is that split between the town or the Board of Education and the Athletic Fund?
So the, the current construction under the memorandum of understanding that was signed in twenty nineteen is that the enterprise zone activities, which are run by the Athletic Foundation, where we essentially run those fields from June fifteenth to August fifteenth for profit, essentially not for profit to the Athletic Foundation, but for profit to the town. Where we rent to Eclipse Lacrosse, um, we have a couple of lacrosse tournaments, seven-on-seven football, things of that nature. We collect those revenues. The net revenue. So after our expenses, which are relatively small, we pay for an executive director. We pay some marketing expenses. The net revenues then get distributed to the town once a year on a, uh, where all of those funds go to a turf replacement account.
Yep.
The other activity that the Athletic Foundation as part of the MOU undertook was collecting the player use fee from all of the youth sports and recreation activities that happen. It's a twenty-five dollar essential tax. And those funds come into the Athletic Foundation and they're split fifty-fifty. Fifty percent goes into the turf replacement endowment account. Fifty percent goes into an enhancements account, which would go to projects like this.
Okay.
Um, it's, it was set up for transparency among the constituents in town to know that their twenty-five dollar tax, they know exactly where it goes. Fifty percent into turf replacement, fifty percent into enhancements of your facilities. Um, both of those accounts are held at the community foundation, the, the turf replacement account and the enhancements account.
Okay.
And that's done once a year, uh, once we, you know, finish our calendar year. We haven't made that sweep this year only because we've been doing some audit work with our bookkeeper who is, um, Benay Accounting out of Danbury. Because there were some things that were improperly classed. They were, it wasn't, wasn't, um, all the monies were there. It was just our bookkeeper didn't put them in the right place. So we just need to, Andy Gordon and I are working on that. Once that is fully complete and settled, we will make our sweep for the twenty twenty-two year. And then we're on to twenty twenty-three for this coming year. I think I mentioned to you all, Bobby Russian had been our executive director and really started this program de novo. I thought did an incredible job creating the enterprise zone and, and attracting tenants. We lost Bobby to Wilton. As he got the athletic director job there, we've hired John Carosa, who is a, uh, he's an educator, educator in the system. He's also the assistant varsity lacrosse coach and the assistant varsity football coach. So he knows all the coaches. He knows the athletic director. He knows the fields. He knows how the allocations of fields work. I think he will plug in perfectly. He knows the students. And he started basically at the beginning of this year. So I'm hopeful that we won't really skip a beat. And given that we sort of have recurring tenants at this point, we shouldn't skip a beat from the enterprise zone standpoint.
Thank you.
So we expect to have a shovel in the ground by the end of June?
We would expect to have a shovel in the ground by the end of June for the new entranceway ticket booth and donor wall. There's an outstanding question about lead generation for electrical equipment to power the press box. So it may be that the press box, we could have the press box totally constructed, but it wouldn't be able to be powered. Um, which makes it somewhat useless. Uh, so we wouldn't want to do that during football season, obviously. And, and this information we just got, you know, the last couple, in the last couple of weeks. So it may be that the press box gets constructed shortly after football season and, you know, be ready for lacrosse season and, you know, Jay's one concern was graduation because we use all of that PA equipment and everything for graduation. And there would be no concern that we would miss graduation twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
Is there any fundraising that has to take place to do certain ones of these, the press box, for instance?
There's some fundraising that still needs to be completed for the press box. If you'll recall, the MOU also has an indication in there that while we still ask for permission from the town council, it gives us the, the right or ability to ask for naming rights. So the current, and I, I think I talked about this in January when I came before you, the current plan is to rename the Water Tower One Turf, the Lou Maronelli Youth Football Complex. We're current, we're fundraising for that and that's been super helpful. Um, the one piece that we're also offering is to name the press box. And, you know, the, the Athletic Foundation on the board level put a five hundred thousand dollar price tag on that. We had a family that I was pretty committed, thought, pretty sure that they were going to commit to that. They will not likely go five hundred. They'll still contribute to the campaign, but they're not going to pursue the naming rights. We have a second and third person that is pursuing the naming rights. So from my perspective, um, you know, we have plenty of opportunity for that. But that's a big chunk of money that is not currently sitting in our account, but I think we'll be able to get it.
So the project won't go forward until that's fully funded?
Can't go forward unless we have two million dollars sitting in the bank and you sign a contract.
Okay. Thank you.
This is all great. Like, what's, what's the, um, balance of the turf replacement fund?
Yeah, a hundred forty seven thousand dollars right now before the twenty twenty two sweep.
Right. So that'll bring in how much?
Fifty. That'll probably bring in another hundred, seventy five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And the turf, I, I just did this math in my head because I've been asked the question before. So the Dunning, uh, stadium turf was replaced in the summer of twenty twenty six, or it's twenty sixteen, which was the second, that was the reason why the Athletic Foundation was started.
Right.
Um, and then the water tower one, two, three turfs were offline in seventeen. And so eighteen is really their first year and of use. And so you're basically five years into that and these turf replacement is anywhere from ten to twelve years. Their useful life.
It's like fire trucks and ambulances, right?
What I'm a hundred percent confident is, is that I will not be sitting here when we have to.
I don't want to hear that. Thank you for all you've done. Seriously. I mean, this is.
So it's harder making a living or running an athletic foundation?
I can tell you which takes up more time.
Thanks, Mike, for everything you do. I would move that we, uh, approve the request from Public Works in partnership with the New Canaan Athletic Foundation and the New Canaan High School Athletics School, school somehow, to enter into contracts with the following design firms in order to prepare construction documents. Richtering Seegan for sixty two thousand nine hundred, T L B Architecture for a hundred four thousand. McCord Engineering for twenty two thousand four hundred, plus a contingency. Uh, the project entails the renovation and reconstruction of the Dunning Stadium Press Box, entrance area and donor walls, well as preparations for the concessions area. Home and away bathrooms and campus area in the order to create an enterprise zone. Uh, second.
Second here.
Further discussion, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. So this, this next item is, um, request for a purchase of, uh, from Granger for twenty thousand nine eighty five thirty five. Um, it's actually twenty thousand four forty one seventy six with a estimated shipping of five forty three fifty nine for a total of twenty nine eighty five. Thirty five for, uh, sixteen concrete planters that we, we, uh, will be using as barricades for the outdoor dining. Uh, the barricades themselves are thirty two inches wide, thirty two inches tall and sixty four inches long. To give you an idea, the precast concrete barrier curves are thirty two inches wide, thirty two inches tall, but eight feet long. Uh, these are just about five and change. Um, we estimate to be about sixteen barricades we'll need to place along the, uh, the area. And then the top of it can be planted and it's much more, uh, aesthetically pleasing than the white barricades that we have at present. I don't know if you have any questions on the, the purchase itself?
Any questions? None here.
Just comment on the storage. Where do you expect to put these when they're?
It's a great question. We're, uh, we're looking at areas, but we, the possibility is to put it down in the pool parking lot. I haven't spoken to John about it yet. But the off season stored away, we, that or we'll have to put it on the top of the landfill area. They'll stack nicely, so it shouldn't be that much of an issue. Plus, we anticipate that we'll probably be utilizing elsewhere for other events. You know, throughout the time.
Sure.
Given, given their nature.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I move approve this request from Public Works to enter to a contract with Granger in the amount of twenty thousand nine eighty five for the purchase of concrete barriers for outdoor dining locations on Elm Street. Second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Uh, so Nick Colabel is working as a meeting with, um, someone about our, um, for our carousel. We're having a little bit issues with our aerators at present, so he's there. He can't be here today, um, to present these next two items. But, uh, the first is, uh, an approval to, uh, increase a purchase order with the Holland Company for, it's a blanket purchase order for polyaluminum chloride for sixteen thousand dollars. The original contract itself was for forty thousand five hundred hours, the original P O. And, uh, we're looking to increase that. Basically, this is a sole source company. And while we, while we're tied into our, the cost or the unit price for the, uh, the chemical itself, we're utilizing a little bit more of the chemical. We seem to, you know, we have both carousels open now instead of one. So we're looking at the possibility of, uh, double the amount of chemicals. We're a little bit below that rate. But, um, it's, uh, necessary for us right now to, uh, maintain permit. So.
You say the carousels are open.
Carousel is a large, the large area that we have that, uh, that provides iteration to the, uh, to the sludge. So.
Is there a reason why two are open rather than one? Is there?
We were, we were historically running one and we were doing quite well running one. And then, um, towards, uh, the end of last year, we were having a little bit of difficulty trying to maintain our, our, our levels. So we opened up the second carousel and it seemed to settle the plant out pretty well. Um, but we are looking at going back to utilizing just one. Nick and I had a conversation with it yesterday, but right now we're, we're running two. It's one of the reasons why our costs are up a little bit. The plant was designed to run on both carousels. At the exact same time, we were able to run it under one. So we were saving money for the past twenty plus years and saving maintenance and wear and tear. Um, but at, at present, it's, um, she seems to like to have the two open. So that's about the best discussion, best description I can have for it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But you want to talk about the other one as well?
Sure. Then the other one is with, uh, Synergy Northeast. Um, it's a increase of thirty three thousand dollars to remove sludge from our, our, our pollution control authority. Um, we went to the, the Board of Finance. They approved, um, an increase uh, of monies for this contract. Uh, previously it was a two hundred and twenty five thousand dollar contract. The revised budget is two hundred and sixty two, four oh four oh seven. In Synergy, Synergy basically hauls our sludge away. Um, so it's a necessary evil, but what we have now is we have, um, issues with, um, the fact that we're actually being charged for, um, additional fuel charges and then highway use fees. So the D O Ts come in with a highway use fee for, for, uh, moving your sludge around, similar to what they're starting to impose for, uh, um, garbage.
So that's a new, excuse me, a new fee?
A new fee, right. It's a new fee for, for that. It's about five dollars a haul. But we're hauling, you know, a couple times, five times out of the plant a week. So it starts to add up. And then there's, uh, fuel surcharge that's built into their contract as well. So they're on a multi-year contract. The contract expires shortly. And, uh, there's a fuel charge built into that. So that's the, the need for, for the additional monies.
Where does it go?
They, they bring it to their plant and they actually manufacture fertilizer out of it. So.
Recycling.
Recycling at its best, yes.
Any further questions?
I move approve the request from, uh, Public Works to enter to a contract with Holland Company for sixteen thousand dollars for the purchase of polyaluminum chloride. For the phosphorus rule at the sewer plant as described by Tiger. And the second contract is with, uh, Syne, Synergy Northeast for the removal of sludge for seventy, thirty three thousand dollars. What's the duration of that contract?
Uh, well, I think we have.
It's, it's open, it's a continuous order.
It's continuous, yeah.
So, um, so I'm moving both items. Second?
Second here, Kevi.
Further discussion, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Tiger.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I do the sweeper parts?
Sure.
Um, so the next is, uh, an increase in a purchase order with C N Wood for, um, for sweeper parts. We had a purchase order of nine thousand five hundred fifty dollars and eighty four cents. Um, but when we ordered the, the materials that came back, that we actually needed some bearings for the sweeper as well. That came in at five thousand three hundred and fifty six dollars, which then tripped our purchasing policy and brought it from the under ten thousand dollar contract to the over ten thousand dollar contract. So we're looking for an additional amount of five thousand, uh, three hundred and fifty six dollars to, uh, to finish this, um, this purchase. Questions? No question. Any questions? I move approve this request from Public Works to increase the previously approved purchase order for C N Wood for, by five thousand three fifty six for additional expenses related to parts for the highway department sweeper machine. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
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 Thank you.
In the playhouse too?
We'll, we'll, we'll bring them back. Go ahead. Let's, let's get this done.
So before you, it is the fiscal year twenty three audit engagement letter that the audit committee has approved to move on and move forward with it. Um, this year, the, the cost of this audit is a hundred and three thousand four seventy five. It's a six percent increase over last year. Um, and it seems within the area, the area finance directors are seeing increases. Ours is actually one of the lowest ones. Um, with audit companies are struggling with staffing, um, issues like most companies are. And we're looking at the fact of, um, companies go, municipalities going out to bid. They're not getting the bids. They're just getting their own audit firm back again. So they're struggling for staff to keep them on. So.
Questions?
Are there any additional services that they have not provided that are incorporated into this new contractor? Is it exactly the same?
Yeah, I called, um, the partner, Joe, to just confirm, to make sure that everything is still the same and what is the normal process.
Okay.
Um, in, in doing the full audit.
Okay.
So there's nothing additional. I, I will just say though, there is an additional Gatsby rule this year. They keep coming up with new ones. Last year was leases. This year is subscriptions. So we have to go through all the subscriptions. Um, it'll mostly affect the Board of Ed. They have more subscriptions for their, their, uh, Chromebooks and things like that for the students. So that's another, uh, process we have to do this year.
Start now.
Yes. Oh, we started a couple of months ago.
Okay.
No further questions. I move approve the request to enter into a contract with P K F O'Connor Davies for the annual audit services uh, in the amount of one hundred three thousand dollars described by Anne. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Cheryl, come on.
Hey, I will do Greg first. Um, Greg has fit very nicely into the finance department and among town hall staff. Over the past six months, some of his accomplishments have been, he has applied for eleven grants. Three were awarded, one was denied, and seven we are waiting on. He has worked with the state legislator on bonding request. He's assisted others with writing grants. He's revised the grant policy for the town and he continues to research grant opportunities. So, um, at this point, I would recommend him coming off probation.
And I would definitely second that recommendation. Um, Greg's been a great, uh, addition to the finance department. And certainly for me, uh, personally, not only in, in terms of what he's doing for the grants, but actually for our accounting of the grants and managing it and, uh, making sure that all the documents are in place.
So, you know, historically, this has fallen upon department heads is trying to apply for grants and, you know, the amount of work that Greg has been doing. Um, it's very difficult for New Canaan to get grants because most of them are competitive and a lot of them are targeted to areas that. So it's, it's an uphill battle to get grants for New Canaan. Greg's doing a great job and, and hopefully the, the batting average by the end of the first year will justify the investment we've made in having Greg here.
Not to put pressure.
But thank you for all you're, all you're doing. It's really, uh.
I have one. Sorry.
You know, adding a new element to our, to our, uh, annual.
Yeah.
Financials to try to hopefully get more, some revenue, more revenue on the, on the grant side. So, yes.
I'm not sure why we didn't do this years ago and that's, I guess, on me as much as anybody else, but I applaud you coming off of probation. I hope your record will be expunged. I never got the whole probation thing. It's like, what, can we come up with another term? It sounds like.
I agree. Thank you. That's great. Thanks for that. So the update I had asked for originally, we just got it right in terms of, so that's great. Perfect. Yeah. Thanks.
And then Zach.
And Zach, um, some accomplishments we have seen from Zach. He has completely renovated the summer camp and extended the field trips. He has brought swimming back, yoga and adult fitness. He has switched vendors for the after school programs. He has added a summer cooking camp. He has also improved brochures, notices of upcoming events. He started a father daughter dance and he is also working on the new registration program. John, do you?
Yeah, Zach has been a tremendous addition to our department. Um, his young, new way of looking at our programs have, have really improved. So we're very happy with Zach.
That's great.
So, you know, obviously we had big shoes to fill with Steve Banko's passing and, uh, uh, so Zach is really a young professional who's hit, hit the ground running. He's bringing us in, into the next, uh, twenty first century with moving to a, uh, improved, um, platform with My Rec.
My Rec.
Um, and, uh, so we're very thrilled that the progress Zach is making and happy to endorse his coming off probation. Any further comments about Zach?
Nope.
I move approve their requesting your resources to approve both Greg Riley and Zach Philippus from coming off probation status.
Second here.
All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Thank you. Sure. I want to use, oh, you can both stay, actually. Tiger's coming back before we go into executive session for the playhouse, right? So we have to do.
Um, what do you want to do next?
Uh, let's do the, let's do the, are we gonna do this? Let's, let's quickly do the contracts. Any, any, uh, questions on the contracts on the tablets?
You're not skipping eighteen?
We'll go back to, we'll go back to eighteen and then.
Um, no questions.
None here.
So, so nineteen is done, contracts. Um, what was the additional item besides one is the executive session, the playhouse?
The Utilities Commission.
Yeah, Utilities Commission. So, um, the reason I put this on here as eighteen is a, uh, discussion of part-time employee hiring is, you know, as I said back on, uh, January third, I disagree strongly with the, uh, policy that you crafted. Um, I said I would go to the town council, which I planned to do tomorrow night, um, to recommend they repeal section fourteen of the town code, which Cheryl has been asking them to do for, for, for last, almost the last ten years. And, uh, that's part of the confusion here about how this works. Um, you know, we cannot make appointments of part-time workers um, because they have to be at will and, uh, um, so this whole subject is one that, uh, requires further discussion with the town council. And, and, uh, I said I would do that back in January third, so.
So, um, also on January third, so when we, uh, did the resolution, we identified sort of the four groupings, if you will, of employees, full-time employees, part-time employees, seasonal employees and temporary, uh, employees or workers. Um, and so we, as you recall, had gone through that process and we updated and approved. So we voted on that. Um, two to one. And so we're gonna move forward. Whatever you're able to do with the town council, go for it. Um, but, but that's going, might be a ways off as it's been, uh, you've been working on it for a number of years, I understand. Uh, but right now we're going to, um, I'm gonna make a recommendation and through, uh, FOIA, I was able to get the current list. It is a seasonal and we knew we're coming up to, it's not all though, right, John? It's just a partial list.
It's mainly, um, lifeguards and staff at the pool.
And these are the seasonal employees are probably going to start sooner, uh, in terms of not, not the camper, a camp, uh, counselors, right?
Camp counselor list will be.
Come next. Okay. Okay, great. So presuming that nothing else happens with the town council or any change. But, um, I would like to make a recommendation. We've gotten your list. Did you get it? Did you send copies to the other selectmen? Of the list, the memo from John, uh, Howe, which was addressed to the selectman? Was that sent to the board?
No, it was not.
Okay. Okay, um, well, I'm happy to share it with you. I'm, I'm sure the first selectman has seen it, but it's a, um, a list of the, um, seasonal employees, seventy two of them. Cheryl, would you be kind enough just to share the process about how, how that?
Here, here's the point. We're still in the discussion of the agenda item, right before any other motion is made. So I'd like Cheryl and John to describe the process by which.
That's why I just asked her. Yeah.
This is my agenda item for the discussion. It's not your motion.
No, I'm just asking if she'd be kind enough to discuss, discuss the process.
It's very important. We understand how ma- management hires part-time employees.
Exactly. That's what we're asking you to talk about.
So back in December, Steve Dayton sent the ads to A D P. Um, once A D P receives it, they push it out to local papers, local, um, online advertisements. We had put the position of lifeguard, pool supervisors, swim team, pool gate attendants, coannas gate attendants, tennis court and pickleball attendants. We received ninety seven applicants. We have, uh, up to date hired seventy two. Forty two of those will be returning. There are background checks that will be done. The employees will be here from May fifteenth to September fifteenth, depending on the position, certain ones start at different times. And the salary rates are between fifteen and thirty five. And the salary rates are between fifteen and thirty five an hour.
I think you missed a key point.
What would that be?
These are at will employees.
These are at will employees with in speaking with Steve Dayton. Really, after the first week or two, they will know who's working out and who is not. If they are not working out, then they would be asked to leave. I believe last year we had one in that position.
So you know, at will employees do not get probationary status like the. To pre prior full time employees, salaried employees. So this whole issue of how we hire part time employees. Is one that has legal ramifications in terms of their rights. As employees and that's why this.
Have you got legal underpinning for that?
Absolutely, yeah. Of course, of course. Well, so anyway.
Are you gonna share that with with the rest?
As I said, I'm going to the Town Council tomorrow night.
But you can't share share with us the legal opinion from your law firm in respect to this issue. About at will versus.
Do you understand at will versus?
I do, but I'm not an eight, I'm an HR attorney, Kevin, not not for you.
I was actually, you know, as general counsel, I did a lot of employment law over the years, right? And it's very critical. People understand. You initially thought full time employees were at will, not the case. This is a very important issue that we have to make sure.
It's a very important issue that we, the Board of Selectmen, actually do review. Full time and part time and seasonal employees as we have done in the past. It is a best practice and it is correct. I might, I'm just curious, this is seventy two employees. Are you and and with, I guess, ninety two have applied. This, there is a labor shortage, right? Because usually you see a tremendous number that are coming in, right? But you're you're still actively seeking.
We're very fortunate. Last year, we were happy with our number of lifeguards we had and again this year. We we lost, I think thirteen lifeguards that weren't returning. They're usually college.
Sure.
Age kids. And so by losing that, we were worried this year when you hear the shortages in the news and beaches being closed, etcetera. So. Right now, we're happy with.
But you're in a good position now. Okay, that's great. I, you know, I would make. If you'd like to make a motion, I can make motion in terms.
No, again, if if this motion involves making appointments of employees, I strongly resist that because that creates something. That is inconsistent with that will employment.
Can someone in this room? Tucker, you, someone else, just. Confirm that what Selectmen Corbett has been proposing and I've been supporting is commensurate with past practice in this town in terms of approving.
Explain how inconsistent the past practice.
Because I I certainly remember doing this and I've had people come up to me and say, hey, I was a part time employee and you approved me.
You know, keep in mind.
So I I I. Say that this has never been done before. Now I've been on this board a lot longer than you have, and I remember approving this type of thing. So I just, can somebody tell me? What we've done in the past?
It's important to understand that prior to when the IRS came in, what year did the IRS come in?
Two thousand fourteen.
So the IRS came in and said, you know, you can't treat these as ten ninety nine independent contractors, right? And we had dozens of dozens of people that we were given ten ninety nines for. And so we can no longer do that with recreation employees. Poll workers, some of them complained that they don't want to get a W two, but the reality is that.
We all have it, yeah.
But the point is, so historically, the historic was these didn't come anywhere because they were getting ten ninety nines. For some reason, Rob Malazi wanted Steve Banko to submit his part time employees to the Board of Selectmen. This is a li- this is a list of names. You know, when I go through these names, I don't care who the lifeguards are. I don't care who the camp counselors are. I don't care, right? And and nor should we. This is a management function for department heads. They're hired, they're at will employees, they can be dismissed at will. That's the critical issue we're discussing here this morning.
I don't think the town code provides for that, Kevin. Unfortunately, I think that that's why you're going to Town Council to change the.
Cheryl's Cheryl's been working on the advice of Bertrand Moses the last ten years to to repeal. Section forty four, it doesn't apply to either full time employees. Is so inconsistent with current practice of our having developed a handbook for employees.
So have you got, have you got anything from Bertram and Moses that supports?
Yes, Cheryl Cheryl has been asking Steve Bank, Steve Carl. As head of the. The ordinance and and commission, committee of the Town Council to repeal section fourteen for last eight years. So that that's the whole issue here. We have to, we have to, we have to have a policy that's the correct policy for the town in the canon.
So just just for everybody's recollection, wh- when we did review this, including the town charter. Article fourteen, section six fourteen one. In terms of what it currently states that all employees of the town, except those who are elected or under the. Or under the jurisdiction of the Board of Ed, the Fire Commission, the Police Commission shall be made by the selectmen. And we did have Bertram Moses review that, obviously, before we put that forward to the Board of Selectmen. And it was voted in and I, just as a confirmation, I did speak with them this week as well, just to say any issues here? And I said, no, go forward. So.
Following the law.
Keep on repeating advice from the town attorney, which is not correct.
If you're, well, that's what we pay our town attorney to. So we, I, I. I applaud you. If you're after eight years or ten years are able to get the Town Council to change something, that's great. It's not changed today. And therefore, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the list that was been provided to us by, and I'm happy to give you a copy. It's attached here. From John Howe of the seventy two seasonal employees. Again, seasonal being the category that we agreed. Was going to be included here in terms of the approval, not the temporary employees, which is a another separate category. So I'd like to make a mo- a motion that we approve the the list of. This is seasonal employees fro- from John Howe. And I'm asking for a second.
I'm a lawyer and I like to follow the law, so I second your motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Whoa, 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 I have to make a comment. We have discussion period after making a motion, right?
Thank you.
So I cannot vote for this motion if it represents appointment of employees, right? If it's an approval of a list, which is meaningless, right? These names to us are meaningless.
Well, I think that's important, you know, understanding the process as well.
You think all of these people are are meaningless? You you calling our potential employees?
We have a due diligence obligation, right? Vote on something. Tell me what you're voting on.
The motion, I don't have to tell you what I'm voting on. I just seconded Kathleen's motion.
You know whether or not. You know, I'm not going to go into individual names because we should do that in a second session.
Well, they're meaningless. So according to you.
It's a meaningless act to approve a list of names.
Which we've done.
I actually think, given the vehemence of your denial, this, it's very meaningful.
Okay.
Because it shows everybody exactly what's going on in Town Hall.
My point is, until we get this process corrected, right? This is a meaningless meaningless act to vote on approval of something, so.
But again, what what we did back in January in terms of what the process was going to be in terms of what we were going to resolve. And and approve was specifically for full time, part time and seasonal employees. And the details that our human ser- our our chief. What's your property title?
Human Resources.
Human Resources Director has outlined is the process that that we go and we do that for full and part time employees as well. And I appreciate you sharing that with us and and John for telling us, you know, about the process. We know that there's going to be another group that's going to come before us. The review process that I do is I, you know, consider the list, see if there's any gaps. And trust that our Human Resources Director and and our Parks Director has gone through the proper process. As we would do for any full time or part time employee. So thank you for doing that.
That's not correct. I mean, the diligence we do on full time employees and give them a probation period for for six months. Is entirely different than the process for at will employees of. So anyway, I can't vote for this motion. I just think it's very important that people understand what the town is doing. This does not represent appointment of employees. Because you cannot be involved in a dismissal of these employees, so.
That well, actually, according to the charter, we can. So it's both, it's both appointment and dismissal of all employees. And that's under charter. If you're able to get it amended, we'll take it up when it's when it's amended, but it's at this point.
Yeah, charter is clear. I agree. So is the discussion done, Ken?
I vote no.
I vote yes.
All those in favor, say aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
What's the other item we have for the?
Or the powerhouse?
Utilities Commission, I think we're making progress toward coming to a list of.
Well, so we just.
Nominees.
Okay, I think it's Kathleen's motion, sir.
Well, we just, we approved to add it to the agenda. Just, we don't have an opportunity to discuss this generally. Unless we're in a public forum such as the Board of Selectmen. So as you said, Kevin. We we actually have gotten a terrific list. This is the current one of potential candidates. Now, there are, just as in summary, we have, I've gone through and and met with. All but one of the candidates that have come forward to us. Again, this is really not our outreach. As people have sent their cover letters and CVs to the Board of Selectmen. So we've gone through a review process. Right now, we're we're now in a situation where we have, including the two incumbents who I've I've talked with as well. There's so there's a twelve people who've expressed interest, but that includes the two incumbents, which I would imagine would actually transition off. Once the Utilities Commission is reestablished, and that's a conversation I've had with both both of them. The question I have for discussion and I'm interested in your own thoughts. Currently, the it's before the Town Council to for tomorrow. And the current draft has it for changing it from six members to five. And I think, you know, I'm fine with five, but I could also see a reason for staying with the six. And that we've gotten a number of people, an abundance of people really who have expressed interest and we want to make sure that. We can have a robust set of experiences on the on the Utilities Commission. Any thoughts on that? You feeling strongly about five or six or?
Or seven?
Or seven?
I mean, I, look, I've been overwhelmed by the. Outpouring of interest amongst the folks in town. Kathleen, I want to thank you in particular for your efforts hurting the cats. But it's been terrific to see people stepping up to volunteer. I mean, people talk about generationally. You know, there's a difference in terms of volunteerism. I'm not seeing that based upon what I viewed. In terms of the interest in the Utilities Commission. So that's that's been a wonderful thing to see. I hate telling people no. With respect to to, you know, populating any committee or commission. I wasn't sure where the five came from. I mean, and and again, you and I haven't discussed this this because we're not supposed to discuss things like this in private, but. I don't know what the general thought process was. I haven't talked to Tom.
I spoke to Tom yesterday and the the the, I guess the original concept was number one, not to have an even number in case of a tie. However, the it does have for the for selectmen to be ex officio and in the case of a tie could serve.
Although, to be to be clear, and I think everybody should know this, it's, we're not just talking, these aren't the days where we're talking about Ds and Rs. We were talking about Ds, Rs and Us.
And I, and an I.
And an I.
So, yeah, so so. And and I don't think this is, these tend to be political issues anyway, but I I think, yes, we've gotten a diversity of. Individuals who are either designated Republican, Democrat. A number of unaffiliates and an independent. So it's a great mix, I have to say. The people who are not tied to any particular party. They don't have the extra step, if you will, to speak with the RTC or the DTC. So it's, I think, important that we each of us meet with those candidates as well. I don't know, I have sent to both the DTC and the RTC a list of of all those. From those respective parties to for them to consider. I've not heard back from the RTC yet. I don't know whether you've gotten any.
Well, the RTC is working on nominees from the RTC as well, so there'll be more candidates.
There's going to be more candidates. Okay.
Which is great.
Yeah.
Which is great. It it, you know, I've met with most of the folks on your list, not all, but by by the end of this week, we'll have met with all.
Okay.
And hopefully, including Kevin, the new folks that RTC is putting putting forward. Just for the record, you know, I think that. The genesis of this interest, this new interest in the Utilities Commission was because of your cell phone tower that you proposed in at West School. But it's it's much, it's a much broader mandate and I've had some great discussions with some of the candidates. We're talking about solar. We're talking about nat gas. We're talking about Cogen. We're talking about AI. I mean, it it, you know, it it's so, it's 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 much broader. It's not just about cell phone towers and I want everybody to understand that.
Yeah. The other conversations that we've had is, you know, I know, Kevin, that you you had expressed some concern that. You know, if somebody lives in the neighborhood in and around the West, the West Tower proposal.
Who did I express that to?
You said to me in the salad line at the country club.
Only in New Canaan, folks.
It's like, but anyway. But so I I I, one of the things I've asked, and anybody who may be in and around that area is, you know. In terms of their ability to be impartial and to, you know, they're they're are very interested in the research and the process. And the demand studies, etcetera. And so obviously, that's going to be questions that you'll you yourself will ask, but. I've felt very comfortable in terms of the process I've undergone. That people are understanding, you know, where you you have to be impartial to serve on a commission such as this. So that's just. Wanted to address the concern that you had raised.
That's a good point.
So. Somebody had expressed and it was, I did not know about this at all. I don't know if it's something that the RTC or the DTC has undertaken, but. Somebody expressed expressed to me yesterday that if you, there was, there was the assumption or the belief. That if your name had been on a. One of these surveys that had come out in terms of the the cell tower last year. That you wouldn't be considered. Now, that's not, I don't know if anybody's name is on the survey. That's not why I would. Turn away anybody. So I just wanted to disabuse anybody of that notion that that's a, that's a no go for for me. That's that's not the case, but I'll just put that out. I don't know where anybody would have gotten that notion.
I hadn't heard that, but I agree with you. That's not, you know, gating.
Yeah.
In and of itself, ipso facto, a gating problem.
Right. So. Any other comments? So I would just say from a timing perspective and just because we're entering the summer months. Tomorrow, the Town Council will be having their public hearing and going through the language. And again, the the one thing I had is and I've is just a question on the the number. Because we do have such a great list of people here that I I think I would be pleased to see if it went higher than five. But I'll let the Town Council think. Think about that. So timing wise for the RTC and the DTC, if they'd be kind enough to share any others, I would, is it? I think not unreasonable to say today on May the second, if we can wrap this up by the end of this month. So that we can in June vote for the Utilities Commission. I think that would be great timing.
So I'll make my comments tomorrow night to the Town Council.
You don't want to share them with us?
No, because I think I think you already have your your views formed.
I don't, I really don't have my views formed. I I just have gone through the process. I've not viewed, I have not done that. So we should tune in on Tuesday or Thursday, Wednesday to hear what you're going to say. I I really would hope that you could share it with the Board of Selectmen as well. If you've got.
I've got a lot of thoughts I'm going to share tomorrow night with the Town Council.
What about us?
Response to the.
We're meeting.
The comment about, you know, I expressed my preference to get a committee together to focus only on. The the cell tower issue, cell service issue. To me, it's the number one important issue in town.
I agree.
Right? We we have very few problems in New Canaan, but we have poor cell service and non existent cell service in parts of town that has to be corrected. I've been working on this for nine years. Unfortunately, we lost Tom Teslick, who was the only person who had any expertise on cell service on that.
You'll be surprised to see, we've got a lot of talent.
Yeah, we've got a lot of people.
But also, I would like, you mentioned in an email that supposedly confidential, that you expect that they will appoint a subcommittee. They cannot make.
Cannot.
They they cannot make further. Sure.
Yeah, we can, they can have a, they can have a subcommittee of their own.
Sure, absolutely. That's the point. That's the point. So the the composition of this has to be people who are broad based. And I think we've seen some people who are broad based with expertise in different areas. But but beyond cell service, I mean, you know, gas is done. We deal with ever source gas weekly and monthly as as staff members. We deal with aquarium water weekly and monthly with with respect to water. We deal with ever source electric with respect to, and we deal with the monopolies of of the duopoly of frontier and and Optimum.
Point, nothing is ever done because it's continuous.
But the point is, we we. But the point is, we really, beyond cell service, we don't have any significant problems in town. We have providers that are monopolies and they're really tough to deal with as staff members. Tiger deals with them all the time, and they are hard to deal with. So I don't know how a, anyway, but the point is.
Well, they shut the power off at Town Hall, as I understand it, for 24 hours.
They shut the power off in August, so we have to run our emergency generator.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
That's why a commission is very important. I think they could be very helpful in each of those areas. And to your point, I, I think because the cell tower, the cell service is obviously, you know, front and center for more than a year now. We want to make sure that, that's why I'd also be inclined to say slightly higher than currently proposed in terms of the number, just so that you can have a subcommittee of the Utilities Commission and with the, you know, at least two or three people working on it.
And my final comment will be, so I talked to the Ethics Board three weeks ago or so, and I told them, you know, a year ago, when Verizon came forward and asked to do a cell tower, we've homed the towers on the west side of town, it would have been unethical for me to tell them, you know, this is going to be controversial. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't have the stomach to put this forward. I didn't have the option not to put this forward. This is Verizon's request, which AT&amp;T has joined. We can't tell these national carriers to go away and not improve their service.
You could tell them to work with us. I would hope that you would do.
They, they, anyway, so the point is, we very much need to address cell service. It would be the number one political issue this year. And.
Agreed.
So with that, I don't know where we are, other than we will, we will make appointments in due course in the next few weeks after the Utilities Commission is reconstituted, reauthorized. So.
Looking forward to that.
With a different mission.
Different mission other than what it says in the published.
What it was historically.
Well, I think it's pretty straightforward that what has been outlined in terms of the new ordinance, so.
The new mission makes more sense. The old mission was 20 years.
It's updated, yeah. It's no longer telegraphs, telecommunications, so, yeah. I, they did a great job of.
So we've had that discussion. Where are we going from here? Tiger coming back to do the playhouse, and then we go into executive session for two items. We always like to listen to Terry. Sure. This is the additional item we added on Playhouse.
Did you get all, get a copy? Do you want a hard copy or? Just the, okay.
It's, it's on the, it's on the portal.
Oh.
But I'll take that. Thanks.
So in response to a suggestion by the Town Council during their approval of the additional funds for the, for the playhouse, we went out to three separate project managers for a proposal for the work. Steve Carl had already solicited a proposal from Hobbs Incorporated. We went out to three others. One did not respond. And then we went to Slam, which is the current project manager for the Police Department. And VVA, which was solicited for the Police Department. We chose Slam, but VVA gave a very good presentation, a very strong presentation during that time. So my staff suggested that we reach out to them as well. In essence, their, their proposals are virtually the same. Slams, while it comes in at 20, 25, 920 is estimated on an hourly basis, 160 hours at a blended rate of $162 gets you to the 25, 920. But if they have to do a little bit more work, they would get up into the, up into the range for Hobbs. And VVA included a cost estimate in theirs, which quite possibly might have driven them over the, the number from Hobbs. All three are well-respected in their field. Two of the firms, Hobbs and VVA, can start immediately on our May 1 deadline. Slam cannot. They can start on June 6th, but they, they mentioned the fact that they could finish by the deadline of June 30. Rather not lose the month in that process of waiting. But again, we could be well-served by any one of the firms going forward. And you know, you can, you can look at it from a standpoint of if Slam can't start until June, and that precludes them from the, the May 1 start where Hobbs and VVA can both start, and Hobbs is slightly less than VVA. The argument can be made to, to hire Hobbs and move forward from there. There are, you know, there are benefits to that as well, given the fact that they're in town. They understand the nature of the playhouse. They understand the nature of the situation that the town is currently in as far as the construction. And they want to, you know, I'll leave that to, to the board to discuss and determine.
Tiger, what are we paying Slam for the Police Department work?
Well, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. I don't know off the top of my head. Yeah, but that's a, that's a, that's a contract where, right now, he's only working part-time through that, through, as we're, as we're developing the design. And then he'll be onsite, be an onsite manager every day. But that's a $27 million project, similar to what Joe did for the, for the Police Department, for the Town Hall. Joe was the project manager for the Town Hall as a private consultant, and then we hired him after that.
Was it 500,000 or what?
No, it's, I think it's in the $100,000 range, but I, off the top of my head, I cannot remember.
Anyway, questions for Tiger?
Tiger, if any one of these consulting services companies, if they have any conflict with the existing development of the playhouse or any of them involved with the Cinema Lab or in terms of being investors or anything like that?
Not to the best of my knowledge, no, no.
You can just double-check that.
I can ask that, yeah. I mean, it would, in essence, the only one that you might would be Hobbs, but I don't think he has any part of it.
Okay.
VVA has absolutely no ties, and Slam, I would say the exact same thing.
Okay.
Joe said we're paying $100,000 on the, on the Police Department. That's what we're paying for Slam.
So this says, "The scope of services requested involved," or would involve, I think, "the review of the current design drawings and the proposal from the general contractor, as well as the HVAC design and proposal for HVAC installation, essentially, a peer review and value engineering process for the project. Given the tight timeframe involved in order to open the theater for the holiday season, the review is slated to begin no later than May 1st and end by June 30th." Isn't the rush to meet a tight timeframe? Didn't that lead to the problems that we have where we now have to bring in a third party to look at what our GC is doing?
No, not necessarily. The fact that.
And what is that timeframe? The timeframe is the end of this calendar year, I'm told.
That's correct, but the tight timeframe didn't cause the problem, the.
But why is, why, why is December, why was December 31st whenever identified as a drop-dead date? And, and who, who was pushing that?
The. We can imagine that, 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 the holiday season is very important for the vendor, for the, for the tenant themselves. We were originally, our interpretation or our feeling was that we were going to open sometime in the summer.
August, yeah.
Right, August. So the, 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 the season got pushed further, or the timeframe got pushed further as more problems developed. The tight timeframe did not cause us the, the construction costs, the cost increases. The building itself.
Do we still think that we're going to meet December 31st? I mean, I was in that building, and I, it would a mess. It's a mess.
Well, at present, it's just, it's been demoed, so there's nothing going forward. It will be a tight situation. We were trying to pre-buy some of the materials, as we mentioned, as we've done prior that you approved. It will be tight to finish, but any other delay will put you out of the, out of the mix. And then you lose the holiday season, which was very important to the, to the proposed tenant. But it doesn't, you know, the, a two-month review or a month-long review of, of the, of the situation or the, the current design and the proposals is, is, is an ample amount of time to be able to take care of that. I left in two months. I imagine that they'll be able to do it in a month. Hence Slam saying that they can start on June 6th and finish by June 30th. So it's trying to put our best foot forward and then continue the momentum and start within the season, which is, you know, the construction season is now, instead of pushing it further into the winter. But the, the timeline did not cause the, the situation for the cost. It was more the, the condition of the building and what we're trying to do in the building, what we, what is being, trying to be accomplished.
I, I appreciate that. I really do. I just get people coming up to me on the street saying, what the hell is going on at the playhouse? We're 100% over budget at least, and now we're bringing in a third party to review what we thought, you know, plans and designs that were okay.
Well, we've been asked to do that. That wasn't part of our, our original thought process. We were asked by the Town Council.
I think it's a good ask.
I don't disagree. I don't disagree. I'm just saying that we weren't, you know, the, the additional costs were asked by the Town Council. I agree with it. I'm perfectly comfortable with the situation, you know, having someone come in. You know, I would be fine with having someone be there for the remaining of, of the construction as well.
I just think at this point, we need to get it done and do it right. I know it's going to cost more money. We don't, what we don't need is an arbitrary and capricious deadline that we have to fit into because the project manager wants that. That's what I would suggest.
Project manager.
We're not rushing anyone. We're, we're trying to fit that timeframe. If we can't fit that timeframe, we won't. We're not rushing anyone. We're not going to get into accelerated costs to try to then beat that deadline. That's not the, that's not the situation.
You said, you said project manager. What did you mean?
You.
I'm not, I, this is, I'm not pushing anybody. Why'd you, where'd you get that impression?
I'd rather not say.
Oh, rather not say.
I'll say. I'm not going to say it. I, I, I just, as we've talked about, the, the grant that we're looking for, for $2 million and the timing, correct me if I'm wrong, on this, this June or July, I think Greg had said, if we don't get it, right, and I guess it's going to be bonded, I don't know if it's gone through the approval process. You know, certainly is a much more attractive project if it's being sort of shared by grants and so forth. I guess, should the timing be considered, considerate of the possible grant coming in in June or July and then kind of getting started with this portion of the project? I'm just curious about that in terms of the timing, the financing, the resources that we might be eligible for.
I would, I would say to that, you know, we have a contract with the tenant.
Yeah.
And they have an expectation. Had, had we gone, had we gone a traditional route of not going design-build, and people had bid on this building, not knowing what was inside those walls, we would have had change orders at the kazoo, and I think Tiger's view is it would have been even more expensive than we're talking about, given.
That's not just my view. That's everyone that's involved. That's contractors, engineers, architects, everyone.
This board decided to go design-build for the first time, and with a 100-year-old building, there were surprises. So I think my feeling is the town overwhelmingly wants this playhouse to reopen as, as a movie theater. We have a great operator in Cinema Lab, and no one is pushing. I'm not pushing, you know. Tucker, are you pushing? So. Yeah, but so, you know, again, we have a contractual relationship with this commercial operator. They very much, you know, it's interesting, this is their business model to go and open closed old theaters. They're doing it from Great Barrington. And there's going to be surprises with 100-year-old buildings.
Of course.
So we would have had surprises with the Police Department, had it not been renovated 40 years ago, taking up. So the reality is.
I'm not questioning the surprises. I'm questioning just the timing and the financing and so forth.
The surprises are what they are. Just, we, we just got to get it done right, that's all. And I just implore you to, you know, we don't need to rush. I'm not worried about the brand.
It's just not a, yeah, there's not a gun to my back.
The holiday stroll is going to be great, whether the playhouse is done or not. Okay.
What, what's your, who are you recommending here? Are you asking us to choose one?
I've left it open-ended, you know, to your, to your discussion on the funding. The Board of Finance approved the additional funding, as did the Town Council during their discussion. They highly recommended.
To get, I do recall.
Having, having a secondary look. They did approve the funding, but asked for a secondary look.
The Board of Finance didn't.
The Board of Finance did not. The Town Council did. So the, you know, that, they can't put a caveat on a, on a, on a bonding issuance or an authorization, but they could certainly strongly suggest.
Who's the recommended provider?
Recommended provider for what?
For the, for the.
I haven't recommended one, only because they're, they're all three are, are excellent in their, in their, in their nature. I would like to start immediately. That's why, you know, Slam is, if I wanted to start today, Slam is unavailable till June. So that puts them out of the, puts them out of the mix. I think, I think Hobbs and VVR are both, would both give us an excellent review. I, you know, and then it leads it to, would we like someone who has an intimate knowledge of the area in the town and its workings? That's more my preference than, than VVA, because I want somebody who's personally invested, as I am, in the, in the success.
Hobbs is cheaper.
And Hobbs is cheaper, but I wasn't getting into, you know, it's professional services, right? So I wasn't trying to get into the, the cost analysis. But to me, I want someone who's as personally invested as I am, and I think that, that Hobbs, given the fact that they, that they live and work here.
I would make the comment that, you know, Ian Hobbs did a fabulous job with the Country Club project coming in on budget, and everyone who's seen it, you know. It's amazed what a great job it is, as well as the library, which is coming in, you know, under budget and on time. And so Ian Hobbs and his firm, and, and personal investment in the town. So they have an interest in doing it. I would personally support the Hobbs firm, and.
I would too.
Yep.
So.
Up to you.
That's, then that would be fun, that was, that fits perfectly. So thank, do you need him?
I'll move, we approve this request from Tiger, whoever, Public Works, to select Hobbs Inc. for $30,000 for the Project Management Service contract, as described in Tiger's memo.
Second the motion.
For the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiger. Okay. So we now have, what else is on the agenda besides the two? Oh, Terry. Is she on Zoom? Audio or video?
She was, I saw her when we first started.
Is there anybody else on by, by Zoom? Right.
Yes, I'm here now. I was muted. I was muted and cut off by the controller at your end. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay. That, that's all. I've, I've been enjoying your meeting, though. Glad to listen in.
We're enjoying it too.
I don't know.
Try again. Go ahead.
My video is still cut off, so you can't see me, which probably doesn't matter.
We've asked you to start your video. I don't know.
No, my, my message says that it's been cut off by your operatives or whatever on your end.
I can hear you, one of these persons.
Okay, I'll start it now. I don't know what's happening. I, I started and it doesn't start.
Yeah, we see you. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to comment, this is really a kind of late point of meeting to comment, but I wanted to comment on a couple of things. The first thing was the minutes of the meeting, last of your 18th meeting. Nature Center project. I was wondering which town body over, is in oversight over this? I see Tiger in front of me, but I think that it's a park department. When this bliss contributed this to the town, what town body, was it the park? Was it considered a park? It was contributed as a nature preserve, I believe.
It's, it's a park. It's Bliss Park legally.
Bliss Park, okay, so that it would be Park and Rec?
Yes.
Okay, very good. I was just concerned that the lead in the soil, according to the, I, I listened very carefully to your meeting, and I guess it will remain there, so it's not really being remediated. It's just being covered. And according to the final words. And according to the final words of the health department, this will enable the area to become part of the daycare licensed campus. And I think we have to, uh, maintain some kind of understanding of where nature and where activities belong within that park. That's enough of that. The second thing I wanted to comment on was the, um, improvement, I think is needed at the accessible pathway between the library and the parking. And that was in one of your ADA executive session discussions. I have no, I have nothing more to say about it, but I think it's, it needs to be discussed a little bit. And the, um, last item was on your agenda today, which I do think is important. And that is in the, any consideration of the improvements of the movie house, which I was thrilled to hear about, um, should recognize that the town has a right of way on both of the alleyways on either side of that building. And I think it's very important to keep those right of ways open because it gives also a lot of options for use of the alleys by perhaps movie attendees who used to run in and out of those doors a long time ago during the movies, but it, it is a, an egress and an ingress also on either side of the old movie theater. And I think those, um, I think the access also to the parking behind the building is important. So I don't know if the right of way extends to both alleyways, but I believe it does.
No.
And, and so I just hope that that's taken into consideration while the new construction work is being planned, because I think it's terrific that the building is being preserved and, um, I'm, I'm very excited about the project and I think the town should have that, you know, ability to, uh, uh, have options as to the use of the right of ways. They've never been made into easements. I don't quite understand why it hasn't been done.
Terry, Terry, let me, let me address, I can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but the town owns both alleyways. We, so we don't have easements. We, we actually own the alleyways.
You own them, but you, you, you have, uh, you also have right of ways on the, um, certainly from the parking in the back. I don't know if you own all of that.
We own all that property. We own the parking lots. We own the stair, the stairs. We're gonna, we're gonna make that AD accessible coming down.
That, then you have a right of way. I misunderstood, but I do, I didn't misunderstand the fact that I think it's good that you keep them open to options during construction, because I am glad to hear of that project. Thank you. That's all. That's all.
Thank you, Terry. Let me just correct one thing you said with respect to the nature center. I believe the health department said that the, uh, the area behind where the, the, uh, is not part of the campus.
It's not.
It's not for you. I thought you said it was Terry. It's not, it's not part of the campus for the the preschool.
No, no, no. The last remark that was made by the, um, the, uh, the, the, um, health official who spoke, Jen, actually, her last remark was that while this did not remove the lead from the ground, it would make it useful and become part of the entire campus, because in other words, children could go over there.
I don't think that's the case, you know, the.
If it was covered up, even though the lead was still there. And, um, um, I, I just, you know, they were, I think it's important that you keep in mind that there is balance between a natural and a activities portion of that property. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Terry. Okay. So we're gonna, it's 10:26. Bob, you have to leave at 10:30, right? So Bob, Bob is off to the lures. Uh, I want to wish you safe travels.
Yeah. Safe trip, buddy.
Yes. Pray for all of us. Thank you.
Are we going into executive session now? We'll come out. We have no votes. We, we. Yeah, I'll move, I move, we go into executive session at 10:26. And again, I said, we don't, we will not vote on anything coming out, right?
Second here.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Never did like those comments, but I don't see any need. I suppose. Okay, so 11:19, uh, we've had a executive session on two subjects is set forth on our agenda and we will, I, I move, we adjourn at 11:19.
Second here.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay.